Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal. Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, Mr. McDougal is traveling for work. I move that we excuse his absence.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Young to excuse Mr. McDougal. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start out with announcements and committee reports as we always do. I've got a few announcements, uh, but I first like to announce, uh, uh, the council's gonna move into an executive session after, uh, the agenda. So seven A, we're going to add an executive session, and I think it'll be about twenty minutes, but I'll make that announcement when we get to it, uh, unless there's any objection from council. Uh, okay, announcements. So happy Columbus Day, happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, uh, but a big happy two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday to the United States Navy. Uh, so, uh, I do wanna thank the Anne Washington Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution for hosting an event on the Rockfish Saturday to honor, uh, local Navy veterans. So it was really nice. Somebody who's worn the uniform for, uh, nearly thirty years, it's always grateful of this type of community support to our Navy and veterans. I like to consider Anacortes as a Navy town. Uh, but a little history, uh, so two-hundred-and-fifty years the Navy has existed, forty-one million people have served, seven-hundred-and-forty-nine were Medal of Honor recipients. From the start, three-thousand-five-hundred in the Continental Navy, to a peak of four-point-one million during World War II, and the current number about three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, and the sixth-largest employer in the state of Washington. And then one quote, and I'll be done with my, uh, my Navy stuff. Uh, "A good Navy is not a provocation to war. It is the surest guarantee of peace." President Theodore Roosevelt in a message to Congress. All right, so, uh, happy birthday Navy and, uh, Guimas Ferry, uh, the parking lot. Uh, closures begin today, so be advised that portions of the terminal parking lots will be closed, uh, starting this evening at eight-thirty. Uh, staff is conducting storm water system maintenance, both Anacortes parking lot on the fourteenth and, uh, and then also through the sixteenth. Chamber of Commerce, uh, will be hosting a candidate forum right here in City Hall. That's tomorrow, the fourteenth, and that's from five to five-thirty, candidate meet and greet, and then the forum begins at five-thirty. Mission is free, but registration is requested. Please visit the Chamber website. Downtown Streetscapes will have an open house, uh, the next day, October fifteenth, and that's a partnership with First Forty Feet Design. This, and the city is hosting this open house along with the, uh, Anacortes Downtown Alliance, Downtown Streetscapes Plan to Enhance Commercial Avenue and Connecting Streets. Five-thirty to seven PM, City Council chambers. Uh, finally, I think, maybe two more. Uh, the city will be participating in the Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill, October sixteenth, ten-sixteen, ten-sixteen. So I encourage everybody to think about, uh, you know, I always say whether it's gonna be five seconds from now or five years from now, it's gonna happen, uh, so we need to be ready for the earthquake. So, uh, you'll hear, uh, I've got notes for this. Same time, the tsunami sirens along the inner and outer coast will be tested, and this will be a different sound. It won't be the regular tones. It'll be, uh, the regular, uh, a wailing sound as opposed to the chimes that, uh, we're used to during regular testing. Remember, regular testing, first Monday at, uh, noon, is a tsunami siren. So again, don't be alarmed and don't call nine-one-one, uh, but ten-sixteen on the sixteenth. And then, uh, finally, uh, we had a few questions asked, 'cause A-Town went out, about the town photo. The town photo is available for the community to download for free, uh, on our website, so feel free to enjoy that one. So that's all of the announcements that I have, and I will turn it over for council announcements and committee reports. So first up, Port City Liaison Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, the Port City Liaison Committee met, uh, last week. Uh, we discussed our next steps in the Event Center, uh, work. Uh, preliminary estimates from our architecture firm, the architecture firm that the, the port has contracted with, indicate, um, a pretty good likelihood that we will be able to achieve our eight-million-dollar estimate. Um, they are working on a revised design for the exterior and for the floor plan, um, that are, that is consistent with some of the direction that we gave at a prior meeting, um, to move the port's proposed lease space to point, uh, closer to the ninth R, uh, connector, and, uh, minimize some of the other space usage and ground truth, the storage room, um, such that we can, uh, probably lower the ceiling a little bit, make a little bit better efficient use of space, and then start looking at changes to, uh, some of the finishes to continue to lower the cost. So, um, I think we're pretty excited about that. We spent most of our time in that meeting, uh, discussing those next steps, uh, figuring out, um, when we will have our, uh, meeting with our user groups, the nonprofits that were, are likely to use the facility, um, and talking about how we are gonna make the best use of our time with the architect at our next meeting, which is tomorrow morning, I think.
Any, uh, questions for?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Wal, uh, Mr. Young.
Uh, no, um, I, I really appreciate the update on the, um, Event Center space. Um, it's, community is really beginning to talk even more about it with curiosity. I just wanted to reiterate and hope that we would have the ability to have in, let's say, like, a plug-in mobile kitchen such as that electrical outlet such that, in case, you know, there are other things. I know we're, we're working to try to make sure that we're utilizing the services that are in Anacortes, but also, uh, you know, that electrical outlet which could help a mobile kitchen would be just tremendous, and it would cost very little. I'm just pushing to make sure we don't exclude it. Thank you.
And, and we're tr, we're tracking that. We're not quite at that level yet, but, um, one of the things that we did emphasize in the prior meeting with the architect was, you've gotta be able to back a catering van up to the, uh, kitchen, and that wasn't really reflected on the existing conceptual site plan. So they're, they're working on those issues, and we'll be sure to catch that when we get to it.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Port City? All right, Finance Committee.
Uh, Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Thank you. So Finance Committee met on October ninth, and, um, council members Moulton, McDougal, and myself were there, along with, uh, Director Hoagland, and then we had a couple of staff, Melinda and Rhonda, present, which was helpful for us. Uh, we had a little, we had a small update about the audit that's occurring now. Everything's going fairly smoothly. They're asking for lots of, they're asking for more additional information, and staff is able to provide that. Um, but that's, should be wrapping up sooner than later. Um, the other things we discussed was a little bit about just, um, high-level discussions about, you know, our budget for two thousand and twenty-six, and some of our challenges we're having, um, with not seeing an increase in sales tax, um, but still seeing an increase in, um, other, uh, commitments that we have, um, for the upcoming year, and trying to pare down and cut away as much as we can so that, uh, we can, um, meet, uh, the expectations that council put on, or told sta, the staff and ma, the mayor, um, at our last retreat earlier this year. Um, so some of those things look at, you know, looking at the ERNR, um, funds and how much we fund them, um, looking at our cash balance, uh, looking at property tax, road maintenance funds, um, and then just kind of being aware of some of the other commitments we have moving forward. Um, we also did a li, a little more discussion about operating increases when it comes to sewer charges and storm sewer charges. Uh, I think there's been some discussion that, of that at council. We kinda just did a high-level discussion. There's gonna be further. Um, but that it kind of looks like approximately five dollars a month for a sewer charge, uh, five dollars a month for storm sewer charge, and then possibly that utility tax, uh, which would be on residential, commercial, and industrial users, which would be approximately two dollars and fifty cents a month, um, from our initial discussions, but would not affect our wholesale, wholesale customers. Um, so, other than that, I think that's all we, we covered. It's just, it's always a challenging time of the year to try to make it all balanced.
All right, questions for Finance Committee? All right, uh, next up, Planning Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Planning Committee met today at five. It was council members Cleveland McGrath, Walters, and myself, and Planning Director John Coleman. We talked briefly about the Streetscape Open House that's taking place here on Wednesday, and some of the budget constraints that we're facing, and, um, the planning department and the planning committee, we didn't have anything to really go over specifically, but just the general knowledge that there will be, there will be some tightening of belts in every department. We also talked about, uh, the permitting improvements that we are going to be enacting. So there is fifteen thousand dollars in the budget for standard operating procedures, and for SmartGov, our permitting software that's been somewhat problematic. There's been some help from our own IT department rather than going outside to SmartGov, and that's been fruitful so far. So that's really helpful to have things happen here and basically now. So that's been great. And we will work on our internal processes before we actually do major SmartGov changes. We really need to know how everything's going to work before we adapt the software to meet those needs. The digitization of paper records in the basement is ongoing. It's slow but sure, and, um, m, many thanks to Sylvia Cooper, who has taken that on enthusiastically and is, is moving us toward that ultimate goal of having all of those, of those per, of permitting records digitized. The comp plan has been recommended to move forward by the Plan and Commission. Thank you very much to the Plan and Commission, and to all the people who have participated in this process and made public comments and made their voices known. It's really important to us. That will come, that draft will come to council very soon, and with this, I, either next week or the week after. And so then we'll be going through that part of the process where, of course, more public comment is available, uh, opportunities are available to be made. So we're really looking forward to getting that going, and then the development regulations, and then we'll be wrapping up the end of the year and in good shape with that. Thank you.
Questions for Planning Committee? All right, uh, Public Safety Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Uh, Public Safety met on October seventh. Uh, Councilmember Hubick and I were both present for that, along with, uh, Fire and Police. So from a Fire perspective to start, uh, we've got a couple of new paramedics beginning, so that means our, um, we are completely full as of now, which is huge. Um, the other thing we got, we received a couple of grants, I think most of the council knows, but one was for thermal imaging cameras. We were approved for four additional cameras, uh, grant for twenty-five thousand dollars with a five percent match. We already have them, um, on engines, but this is specific for medic units and the battalion vehicle. So that's pretty exciting to, um, receive that grant and have those cameras available. Uh, the other thing which we will discuss further in the agenda is a Safer Grant, um, that we received. We discussed that somewhat and, um, asked some pointed questions. So, uh, to, uh, Chief Harris, thank you for providing the, um, PowerPoint ahead of time. I think that was very helpful for council, and, and the public will be able to see that, too, just to articulate the importance of those battalion chief positions and the addition of the, the three new positions. Um, then, from a police perspective, uh, the boat went out. Uh, the mechanic said it looked great. We've got two certified boat handlers, or two, two officers that were certified this last year. We've got a couple kind of historical, historic boat handlers from when we had a boat prior that's already certified, and we're looking to certify another four in May. Um, Officer Michael, uh, has just, is going to go to bicycle instructor school. We used to have kind of, uh, officers on bicycles around. Uh, I think we just got too lean that we didn't have that as an option, but he's going to, uh, go to, uh, school so that he can also be an instructor for the rest of our, um, de, uh, Police Department. So that's kind of exciting. Um, working on forensics, digital forensic updates. So when there is, um, evidence such as a phone, uh, iPad, things like that, there are, they actually have lockers, physical lockers, that they can secure them and keep them charged and all, all those good things, which I wasn't aware of, but we saw pictures, and that helps a lot. Um, and then also they can process, um, if they need to collect information on those using, uh, digital files. So that's kind of exciting that they're getting that up to date. Um, and what else? We've got a couple of folks in the academy, a couple of folks that are still doing field training. One just finished field training. Um, so everything seems to be going fairly well in Police and Fire.
Questions for Public Safety Committee? All right, any other announcements or committee reports I may have missed?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Uh, I just wanted to mention again that next Monday, the twentieth, from eleven-thirty to one PM, will be the Association of Washington City's District Fourteen meeting, of which we are part of. Um, I know Ms. Hubick will be going as well, and I think the mayor is gonna go as well, but if there's anyone else that would like to attend, we would love to have your support there as we discuss, um, AWC's two thousand and twenty-six legislative agenda.
All right.
It's at the O'Carver Yacht Club.
All right, uh, next up is public comment, and, uh, bef, any, this is a time when any member of the public wishes to address council anything that's not on our agenda, but I do have a couple of folks that signed up way, way in advance, that come up. So if, uh, Andrew and Colette Arvidson, uh, wanna come up and, uh, talk to the council about White Cane Day. Yep, yeah, to the... And make sure the light, little light is on at the base of the microphone. Uh, base of the microphone, on the...
There, and the light goes on.
Yeah, there you got it.
I'll let him know the light's on.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'm Colette Arvidson, and I'm president of the Anacortes Lions. And I'm here tonight to talk about, or to present White Cane Days, but I think it's most appropriate to have my husband, Andy Arvidson, who, we are both Lions, and we are, he is, happens to be the president of the Washington Council of the Blind, the state organization. Both the council and the Lions have local meetings and local people in the community, and I've got some materials that after he talks I'll be willing to give out, which include both the Low Vision and the coun, uh, chapter, the Council of the Blind meetings that provide people with resources to become more independent in our community, as well as a bookmark that we're giving out to all the third graders in the next couple of weeks when we do a special project, again, with the Lions and the council. So, Andy, would you please talk about White Cane Day?
She didn't leave me much time.
Don't we get three minutes?
Yes, yeah, you're good, you're fine.
As she said, I'm president of Washington Council of the Blind. I've been in Anacortes since two thousand and five, and when I'm out with my guide dog, which makes me move quicker and easier than a white cane. She has eyes, and white cane doesn't. My, with my white cane, people I've found don't recognize what a white cane is all about. I get asked, "Are you a pole walker?" Uh, all kinds of stuff. "What's that?" And so, we're trying to make awareness about what white cane is. It's, it's not for people with disability, it's not to disable people, it's to able people. White cane is like a GPS system in your car. It's a mobility tool. It's not a, not a handicap thing. Um, I would like to invite our mayor and all council members to take a walk with me in, in the town, and we have glasses you can put on that will distract your vision, obscure your vision while you have the glasses on. And so you can try to walk our sidewalks in our street in Anacortes, and you can find out how important a white cane would be to find objects and stuff in front of you. The only problem with white cane is you can't, if they don't find stuff that hits you in the head.
Doesn't go up.
I probably have lumps to prove. But it's about abilities. It's not about disabilities. We have a large group of people in Anacortes that are low-vision. And a lot of people don't use white canes or guide dogs 'cause they're afraid of being challenged. They're afraid of, afraid of being vulnerable, and they're afraid of people, what people will think of them. I learned a long time ago, when I started losing my eyesight back in the late seventies, that what other people think of me really isn't any of my business. And so I want people to think about people being able to be able-bodied and not disabled. And so, uh, that's why I'm promoting this white cane thing. Uh, tomorrow, we'll be in Mount Vernon with the county commissioners, getting a proclamation for Skagit County about White Cane Day. Every president since nineteen sixty-four has signed it, every year. Um, it started with LBJ, and every president, no matter whether Democrat or Republican, have signed it every year. Uh, some of them have added terms to it. And so I, I just would like people more aware that the, we're becoming a retirement community, and when you get older, guess what? You lose eyesight, you lose hearing, and you lose lots of things. I'm only seventy-five next month, so I'm not getting old yet. So. But I want, I would like more people, in a Washington State driver's manual, which I can read with my phone, it says in there that if you see somebody with a white cane or a guide dog, you must stop. And, uh, it's getting easier since I started talking to third-grade kids that go home and tell their parents about it. But when I first moved to Anacortes, I had a hard time crossing streets. 'Cause I dare you to close your eyes and try to cross the street. You have to step out in front of traffic most of the time to get people to stop. My guide dog will not leave the car if wheels are moving, will not leave the curb, and, uh, 'cause she's taught intelligent disobedience, which will not allow me to walk out in front of a car. But even with a white cane, if I'm standing on a curb, I'm not leaving the curb. I'm not gonna walk in front of you if you're moving. So I would like for everybody that's listening to this to encourage people, if they see somebody with a white cane, or a walker, or a guide dog, to please stop so people can cross the street. Anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and we'll be gladly take the, the info that you've got.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Uh, thank you. And, well, you know, I, I've said this before, and I will say it again. I am blind on my left side, and it's been that way since I was three years old. So depth perception was always an issue. I, I thought I couldn't, didn't know how to, um, how to play baseball because I, I thought it was some type of algorithm. Everybody had a secret, but I didn't have depth perception. When it came down to basketball, it was the same thing, and football. And that was the way you rose in my community at that time. So I always thought that it was something that I needed to learn the hard way. And, uh, but, uh, I decided, I wanted to say just a couple of words about it, and thanks for this awareness, because it is an issue, depth perception, everything about it. And sometimes in our day-to-day, that of living and rushing from one place to the other or trying to get things done that we need to, this is a wonderful reminder, because it reminds all of us that, um, there are different challenges. But it also, you know, being able to walk and with the white cane and go out into a community that you can't see. Sometimes we think seeing is our safety net, but it also takes a lot of courage. And it also is an opportunity for all of us to learn from others and to pay attention. So, you know, that piece about seeing someone with a white cane and stopping, that's another thing that I think an opportunity to remind our world about, and I think lessons in people like this, and this opportunity to bring your story forward, tells it. And so that's why I'm willing to tell mine at the same time. So thank you for bringing this forward, and I look forward to assisting.
And, and the other invitation we'd have, if anyone would be interested in relaxing and having a free Tai Chi class, that's one of the classes my husband teaches, at nine o'clock every Tuesday and Thursday morning, and at six-thirty on Thursday afternoon, evening, rather. So if you feel like just relaxing, come.
All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Young. Uh, okay, uh, I've got next to signed up is Catherine Stramberg, I think, and, uh, the topic is pick, uh, covered pickleball court. So come on up, and that's why you gotta say your name for the record, because I may have butchered it or didn't read it correctly.
Catherine Stramberg. So I attended a meeting here about a year ago in which we were asked to, what kinds of changes or ideas we'd like to see happen in the community? And at that time, I brought up pickleball court, and there seemed to be some interest in it. I, I have, uh, for the past five years, played pickleball at the covered court in Mount Vernon, and it has ten courts. They are full all the time. It's a very unique sport. It's, all ages can play. I see grandmothers playing with their grandkids, and both being very competitive. And it just seems a shame that we don't have something like that here in Anacortes. I think a lot, especially since we're a senior community, too. But like I said, it's not just seniors. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the United States, and, uh, all we need is some courts here. We need them to be covered, because we live in the state of Washington, and it rains here. And, uh, so I didn't really know how to approach this, and what I should do first to try and encourage this. So I thought, well, a city council meeting is where I'll start. But if you could let me know what I should do next, I would love to help out with this.
Well, I know the Parks Director, the Parks Department would love to talk to you, 'cause, uh, they're, they're working, working our pickleball issues on behalf of the city to, to try to sort out the best, best solutions in the city.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh, next signed up is Zuhamu. Uh, the topic is property tax ordinance and resolution thirty-one eighty-four.
Shihua Mu, Anacortes. A couple of things I would like to address the council members tonight. Number one is following up with the draft property tax ordinance, uh, public hearing last week. I took exception to the council member's statement that without one percent levy increase, that we would, uh, go into bankruptcy. We have yet seen the city's twenty-six budget, and unless I'm missing something, I think it's premature to say that. Secondly, um, property tax levy can be complicated. However, as elected officials, uh, you have legal and ethical responsibilities to explain the levies to the citizens, and I have experience to translate technical specifications as well as mathematical models to English, so I'm more than happy to help. Okay, second subject, resolution thirty-one eighty-four. I attended the Fadago Pool's presentations recently, as well as the, uh, meeting the candidate forum last Friday night at the city library. And there was a confusion between the city's resolution thirty-one eighty-four language, specifically on page one, paragraph four, the fourth whereas. And the discrepancy is, the whereas says, "I own and operate other parks, recreational facilities, and the programs within the city limit," not within the city limit, "with Anacortes School District boundaries," but the ballot language specifically was Fadago Pool and the Fitness Center. I actually noticed the issue back in ma, uh, mid-September, and I contacted the city attorney on September twenty-second. And she understood my concern and the confusion, and said, uh, and I requested a correction of the resolution language. And, uh, she said, "Because the resolution was already signed, so we're not able to correct it." Then I requested a amendment, and, uh, because, I guess I was the only one raising the question, so that would be dealt on an individual basis, so we're not going to do a amendment. Uh, additionally, during the forum, I heard another concern is on second page, the first, section four. You have two section fours on page two in resolution thirty-one eighty-four. The first one says, "Does matter. Pieces and parts can be unconstitutional or invalid deemed by a court, and the levy and the tax collection will still take place." And that's viewed as an issue by some citizens. So I request, urge the city council looking at clarifications to the citizens prior to the, you know, ballot voting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the input. Uh, I don't have anybody else signed up, but is there anybody else who wish to address the council on anything that's not on our agenda? the council on anything that's not on our agenda? Don't have anybody online. Oh, okay. Come on up.
Suzanne Roner, Anacortes, thank you for this opportunity. On July 28th, the city council adopted resolution 3184, requesting that the proposition to create the Fidalgo Metropolitan Park District be submitted to the voters. The proposition was identified as being a limited purpose MPD. This means that the ballot proposition must specifically identify those public parks or recreational facilities to be funded, and must state the maximum regular levy rate. I recently received the voter pamphlet and read Proposition 1. It stated the property to be included in the MPD was the Fidalgo Pool and Fitness Center campus. The word campus does not seem specific. I asked AI, and I realize AI is not a lawyer, but it knows a lot of stuff. I asked AI if the word campus in a proposition would be advisable. The answer was no, for the following reasons. Number one, not defined in RCW 3561. Washington's MPD statute does not use or define campus in any context. The legal framework refers to territory, district boundaries, facilities, and parks. Number two, implied institutional scope. Campus typically connotes a school, college, or hospital setting. Using it in a civic or recreational context may confuse voters or imply a narrower scope than intended. Number three, ambiguity in expansion. If the MPD later acquires new sites, the term campus could raise questions about whether those sites are part of the original scope or subject to the same limitations. The title of the proposition, Fidalgo Recreation District, does not, Fidalgo Recreation, or Fidalgo Metropolitan Recreation District, does not contain the word pool, and suggests a broader scope, or broader purpose MPD. I then read resolution 3184, which states, if approved by voters, this new district would take over the Fidalgo Pool and Recreation District's operations and assets, including the Fidalgo Pool and Fitness Center, and other parks and recreation programs within the same boundaries as Anacortes School District. This resolution language does not align with the proposition language. I asked AI if that was the problem. The answer was, heck yeah. A proposition to adopt a resolution should absolutely align in language, scope, and intent with the resolution it references. This ensures clarity, legal, ensures legal clarity, voter understanding, and procedural integrity. So, there are three problems with the proposition. The word campus is not legally defined in the governing RCW. The title of the proposition does not contain the word pool, and appears to be in conflict with the limited purpose of the proposition. The language of the proposition, which is the language the voters will see on the ballot, and the language the voters will use when deciding to vote yes or no, is not in alignment with the resolution it references. My intent today is to point out these ambiguities for the public record. Thank you, and happy Columbus Day.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right. Anybody else, before we move on to the next agenda item? I don't have anybody online, so we will go to our consent agenda, items 5A and B. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton, and a second by Mr. Young to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto other business, starting with 6A, ordinance 5006, authorizing an interfund loan from water to sewer. This is a discussion item, and we got Mr. Ogland and Mr. Rayum to...
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. This is the ordinance that we introduced last week, so this would be technically second read. It's an interfund loan that would loan 4.5 million dollars from the water fund to the wastewater fund, and the idea would be to use this cash to get started on the combined sewer overflow project, the CSO project, as soon as possible. It was set up with a five-year treasury interest rate, which is 3.61%. This represents the amount of interest that the 4.5 million could earn if it were invested and into an eligible investment. This would be the rate that would be paid back in simple interest form from the sewer fund to the water fund over a five-year period. Counsel had a few questions last week, so Mr. Rayum is here to try and, I think, answer a few of those.
All right. Thank you, and I know this was presented when I wasn't here, but I know counsel's aware that this was obviously in the CFP, and you're also aware of our sewer funding challenges, so I think that's the financial mechanism, but Mr. Rayum can probably remind counsel what the project's all about.
Okay. Yeah. Good evening, Andy Rayum, Public Works Director. So, this is just a kind of a, just a brief of what the CSO pump station's all about, and why we would like to do it now. So, you, or we, have a combined sewer system. What that means is during rain events, we get a lot of water, a lot of storm water goes into your sewer system. We typically see 2 million gallons a day, it goes up to 10 million gallons a day, and that's when it's really raining hard. That was typical, having a combined sewer system in the late 1800s and early 1900s, they actually engineered them that way. We've taken steps since then to try to get hard surfaces off of the sewer by installing storm sewers, but there's still, obviously, we've 500% increased in the sewer, so our flows during rain events, so it's not completely separated. It is considered a combined sewer system by the state of Washington. I think that's about, oh, just to keep in mind, we are allowed one combined sewer overflow event per year via our wastewater discharge permit.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
To what extent is it a combined system? Obviously, new construction is getting connected to separate sewer and stormwater systems. Do you have any way of characterizing that, what portion of the city, or what area?
Pretty much all rooftops are going to be in the combined sewer system. The roads, parking lots, there's probably a mixed bag. I don't know, I studied this in Seattle in the Soto District, so I can tell you, our experience is there, trying to get stuff out, the storm water out of the sewer system. But again, turn to the building, there's nothing you can do to get that roof water from going into the sewer. Parking lots, sometimes you can, sometimes you can't, but like, the roads specifically, we've got those all equipped with storm sewers now. To answer your question, I don't have a percentage. You look at the roof, you can take the roof area and take that aside and use that percentage based on the whole area, and get you a ballpark.
Yeah. What date, I guess, or what decade, did we really move away from a combined system and require new development?
I don't know specifically here, but I would say probably in the 50s, they realized that was a really bad idea to have a combined sewer system, and started designing systems that are separate, that where you have a storm system and a separate sewer system. So, probably around then, they said, let's stop doing that.
Okay.
So, this is something, I can go over these little bullet points here, but real quick. So, our avenue, there's a big sewer trunk line under our avenue, and it takes water all the way from Sharp's Corner, basically, and brings it back this way, through our avenue's trunk line. The existing trunk line is pretty full, and I'll show you in this diagram here next. Adding a larger outfall does help, but it's just, the system, the hydraulics of the system, it just backs up in the system, so you can have sewage come out of the manholes instead of staying in the pipes. And so when we, here, I'll just show you the picture. So, these aren't identical, but we do have, just for reference, and this is probably, this is a printout of the model, but what's on the bottom there, that blue area, and this is kind of exaggerated, that blue area is the actual pipe itself. And then each one of these vertical stands, those are the manhole pipes that come up from the, the main just goes, you know, parallel underground, and those come up to the manhole lid, so we can access the sewer system. So, each one of those is a manhole. What you see is that during, this is during very hard rain events, that see how the blue starts coming up the vertical manhole pipes? There, you can see where this is just south the Safeway, how it is above the green line there is the surface, the ground surface, and that's when you have sewage coming out onto the street. So, and we have proven this model actually does work. We've seen that happen at that exact location just south the Safeway in our avenue. So, with the, this is that model run, this is the first thing that gave me when I started working here, by the way. So, it is a big deal. You can't have sanitary sewer overflows, not only is it disgusting, but it's also Department of Ecology issue with your stormwater permit, and I can go on and on, but it's a bad thing. So, you try to avoid that at all costs. So, one of the things, like I said, was to build that trunk line, or, I'm sorry, the new outfall. So, the new outfall's in, and we did have this design pretty much ready last year, but we were still working on the outfall, and we couldn't have, I don't know if you've seen two contracted construction companies in the same work area at the same time, and it's not a good thing. So, you typically try to sequence and wait, and so we've been waiting on the CSO pump station to get the trunk line done. So, the trunk line's done, but what this model shows you, and it shows you where Safeway is, and obviously, it's going down the system south more, but see how the pipe itself isn't full, which is not surcharged, which is a great thing, and the only way we can do that is building the CSO pump station. That's kind of the gist of it. So, without it, we don't, it did help to have the outfall in, but it's not enough. I'd ask that question first, was like, are we good now? Have we tried modeling it without the CSO pump station? And they did, and it didn't help in the heavy, heavy rain events, so. And we don't typically, have we had a CSO since I've been here? No. So, we haven't had one yet, but again, we were permitted to have one per year. We reported to the college, we measure how much we discharge, and, yeah, so. But it will happen. I mean, just, it rains that hard someday, that it'll happen. So, the project status, so it's 100% designed, it's bid-ready. With a project like this, if you did want to pause it, you could. The only problem is you have to reevaluate the design, so then it's not 100% designed anymore, you've got to hire somebody to do that. With this size of a design, I would estimate it's between $250,000 and $500,000 to refresh the plan set. So, I don't recommend doing that. We have a bid-ready package ready to go right now, so we don't incur that cost. I already went over having two contractors in the same location at the same time is a bad thing, and then, we didn't, so we did look at, kind of, we didn't think we had a cash issue until it just literally came up. So, we haven't had a whole lot of opportunity to look at grants. The grants typically are for CSO abatement, which means you've removed a CSO, not improved the CSO's function. So, I wouldn't recommend that being a real likely way to go to try to finance this in a different way. If we did try to go with the grant cycle, we'd be out a year and a half again, and so we're back in the same boat of refreshing 100% plan, our design, so. I think that's, oh, a map. You guys love maps. So, I don't know if you can see, oh, can you guys see my little pointer? So, the trunk comes in right here, so this, so we're not showing existing stuff, this isn't the best, but this is the plan set for the actual project. So, the trunk line comes down the street and comes into this building. We're going to intercept it with this. This will have a, it's called a weir, so once the water gets full enough, it'll go over the weir and go into, this is the CSO pump station right here, and it hooks up to our new outfall out the side here. You can kind of see it really light. And that's kind of the gist of it. There's pumps in here, there's meters in here, there's a way for the water to go back, oh, we're having a fire, for the water to go back from the CSO back to the plant to be treated, instead of having a CSO out. Again, we try not to do this, but if we have to, once a year, we're still okay, but like Walker said, we haven't had one in a couple of years, so. I think...
It's the second time I've knocked on wood.
What's that?
I'm sorry, superstitious. He said twice, we haven't had one in a couple of years, so. Mayor Miller.
There you go.
Mr. Walters.
So, if you go back to that last slide, so I think I understand that with the addition of this pump station, you will be able to receive and empty out the pipe on our avenue faster? That's the key?
Yep.
Okay.
We're not allowed to discharge more. So, we have record of how much we discharge each CSO. It's kind of weird to think about, like, well, you just kind of supercharge your CSO, why do you mean it's not going to be more flow? We literally can't do more flow, it's just, right now, like, it'll pull, it'll drain the trunk line. But it's the same amount we would have saw if it was the old CSO system.
Yeah. But you'll be able to empty that pipe out, so there's capacity in our avenue pipe.
So, there won't be anything coming out of the, yep.
Okay. Okay.
Other questions?
So, this is a loan to ourselves, from water to wastewater, and I think we've got figures on, that we were sent via email on our financial reserves in the water fund, and we seem to be good there, and we don't, we're not taxing that to an extent that it can't do. It's capital projects. What will we be committing to by virtue of this action in terms of rates? Will we be able to cover this project's at least payments on that five-year loan within existing rates?
The initial analysis that we've done on this, so over a five-year period, payback for the interfund loan, we have talked a couple of times now during the preliminary budget process about five, roughly $5 rate increase per month in the sewer fund, and that would cover the entirety of the annual balance due back to the water fund.
But in the absence of that?
Yeah. So, we would sharpen our pencils back, in addition to what we're already doing during the budget process, we would sharpen our pencils and just come up with that internally. So, this is the, we, in fact, we're talking about capital projects in the sewer fund today, and this is the number-one project they have. So, in the absence of this 4.5 million dollars, we would have to rework the existing budget to fit within the existing cash flow.
Is this the, I don't have the CFP open in front of me, is this the only project for 2026 for wastewater?
No, the other...
No, it was storm water that was isolated down to one or two projects, I think.
Yeah, storm water had two, yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. I think I'm following you. So, we would have to cut other projects if we didn't adopt that additional rate?
Yeah. In fact, the way the budget is shaping up right now, even with that additional funding, we would not budget for the full complement of CFP projects identified for 2026 in the wastewater fund.
Okay. All right. I was just trying to get at, you know, it seems like we're sailing toward a rate increase on sewer. I just wanted to know when we are actually making that decision. It sounds like we're not necessarily making it tonight, but soon.
Correct. Yeah.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move that we adopt ordinance 5006, authorizing an interfund loan from the water fund to the wastewater fund.
Motion by Ms. Moulton, and a second by Mr. Walters to adopt ordinance 5006. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Ms. Heebick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next up is item 6B, contract award wastewater treatment plant, pump station 13, replacement pump purchase, discussion with possible action, and you're still here.
I'm still here. Other side of town now, we're talking about pump station 13, which is at Skyline Marina. It's literally like in the yard there. Before use of contract, an amount of $143,750 with Whitney Equipment to have one pump ordered and available to us for a backup pump for pump station 13. Walker's here, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you have minutes if that pump station failed before you have a lot of sewage coming out of that station, so in addition to having a spare pump, which is always a good idea, the pump station itself has two older pumps in it now that we need to take out and refurbish, and so that's not the type of place you just leave it on one pump and think everything's going to be okay. You put the standby pump in there while you're refurbishing one of the pumps that have been in there for some time, so that's why we want to do it now. That's about it. Do you have anything to add?
No, I think you kind of stole the thunder there. All right. The intention is to purchase the critical spare pump, both the existing pump
that's about it. Do you have anything to add?
No, I think, I think you kind of stole the thunder there. It's, uh, the, the intention is to purchase the critical spare pump. Both the existing pumps are approaching 15 years old. Uh, the intention is to rebuild them as soon as we acquire the new pump in sequence. Uh, and when the rebuild process is over, we'll have one shelf spare.
All right. Uh, questions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. So this, is this a pump that would be there permanently? It's not one we would move as a backup to other places? It's specifically for this?
It's a big pump, yeah, it's just for this location.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, I move that City Council authorize the mayor to sign contract 25263 SEW 001 with Whitney Equipment Company in the amount of $143,754.31 for the wastewater treatment plant pump station 13 replacement pump purchase.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the contract as presented. Additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Pantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Uh, thank you. Uh, next up, item 6Z. This is, uh, Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant. This discussion item with some possible action. And Chief Harris is already there, ready to go. Whenever you're ready, chief. Yep. Uh, it's, it needs to be on.
How about now?
Yeah, a little better.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council. Um, tonight we're here to present to you the Safer Grant and how we intend to utilize the positions that it will fund. First, just a little bit of background. Uh, the Safer Grant is a FEMA, FEMA Preparedness Grant. Um, it's designed to help local jurisdictions put firefighters on the street that are well-trained and to help them, or help us, um, comply with NFPA standards, specifically in this case, 1710 for us. Um, this particular application was written for three firefighters, um, and the grant will offset their costs for 36 months. Uh, 75% in year one, 75% in year two, and then 35% in year three. Um, and I'll get quite a bit deeper into the finances a little later in the, the presentation. This slide wasn't in, uh, the, the packet that I sent you on Friday. It was put in after some questions came up, uh, over the weekend. Um, really it's just our, uh, AFD org chart, um, both current and kind of, and what we intend for it to look like in the future. Um, currently you'll see myself and two assistant chiefs, or up until the very recent past, myself and two assistant chiefs have shared, um, the duty chief, uh, responsibilities. And with that, once we go home at night for seven days on and then 14 off, we respond back when there's a critical call, a boat fire, a structure fire, CPRs, um, thing, or multiple calls. And then each of our shifts, we have three shifts, um, is supervised by a battalion chief. And on each of those shift are three lieutenants and seven firefighters. And what we're proposing, um, is to accept this grant, unfund one of the assistant chief positions, and then add three new firefighters. And again, we'll talk more about just how that looks, um, here on the next slide. Um, one thing I just want to point out is that while we keep, we keep mentioning three new positions, really at the end of the day, we'd only need that two, um, with the unfunded AC position. And with this one, I promised the Public Safety Committee some stick figures, um, in a, in a, in the presentation. So that's what this is. And it's really just a display to show, we talk about 11 firefighters or 12 firefighters, but what that really looks like every day. So if you look there on the left, you'll see 11 firefighters represented on the shift. Um, but with Kelly days, vacation and sick, there's two, between two and three off on a regular basis. Um, the vast majority of days, there's three off, and that leaves eight, um, to work. And you'll see in that case, the battalion chief, um, functions as both a shift supervisor and the company officer on the trucker engine company. And then also at Station One, we staff Bed 14 with two firefighters or a lieutenant and a firefighter. As you'll remember, out at Stations Two and Three are outlying stations. There's only two personnel assigned when we're at minimum staffing, which is almost always. Um, and they cross staff. So they'll get into either a medic unit or a fire engine, depending on what type of call, uh, comes in.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
On, on this graphic, what is the significance of the red stick figures? Are those angry firefighters?
Sure. No, the battalion chief is the angry one. You'll see I made him frowning there. But the, uh, no, so I'm sorry. So that's actually colors of helmets in a sense. So our chiefs wear white helmets, lieutenants wear red, and then in our department, uh, firefighters wear black, but that doesn't show up good with a smiley face. So I made him yellow, which is another common fire color.
Uh, okay. Maybe I missed it then. What, what's the red?
Lieutenants.
Lieutenants, huh? All right.
And then if you look, uh, to the right there, you'll see if we add one more for a shift of 12, um, again, most, there'll be almost always three off at that point, um, but that still leaves nine on. Um, in that case, the battalion chief, battalion chief will move into the command vehicle, um, where they were always intended to function out of. And then that lieutenant would move on to the, the trucker engine company. And represented the new firefighter with the orange, um, would move on to the medic unit, um, depending on who's off on any given day.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Um, chief, could you remind me what a Kelly day is, please?
Yeah, Kelly day, so it's a, it's a scheduled day off. Um, and it really comes down to, it could be, as we work, one of the benefits to our employees working 24 or 48-hour shifts is we only have to have three platoons to cover 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Any other schedule beyond that, a day shift or a 12, we'd have to have four or more platoons to cover those. And in the FLSA, the Fair Labor Standards Act, um, it allows for firefighters and police officers to work in a different, because most employees get overtime at the 40-hour mark. Um, firefighters, um, can work up to 53 hours, um, in a period. Um, our firefighters in our contract have a, they're on a 24-day cycle. So on that 24-day cycle, they're scheduled to work eight. But if they worked all eight, that would put them over that, even the FLSA threshold, there'd be built-in overtime. So the Kelly day drops those hours below that threshold. So there's no automatic overtime. Okay. And there's a lot of information here that I really want to get to, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read off of this one, um, so I don't miss anything. But this is just as to why, uh, we need, I believe we need to make this, this move, um, and get the battalion chief, um, out into that command vehicle. Our current model of administrative chiefs responding from home is no longer adequate for the volume and complexity of our emergency calls. Uh, the AC and myself don't have enough time to train with the crews in a manner that makes us effective operationally, and it reduces the safety of our members and the public. We also aren't involved in the minute-to-minute status of routine calls and unit dispositions as the BC would be. When a major call comes in, we are immediately behind the curve as it relates to the operational status of the department. Related to this, the time that the AC and I do allocate to emergency response and monitoring calls directly affects our ability to properly carry out our administrative responsibilities. The frequent distractions greatly reduces our productivity. Getting the BCs out of the engine will allow them to properly supervise, develop and train their lieutenants and firefighters. Currently Stations Two and Three either have to go without some of the training, or they have to come out of position back into Station One if they want to train with the battalion chief. This leaves our citizens unprotected during those times. When our shift supervisors are assigned to the two-person companies today, they are unable to carry out the command responsibilities that are critical to both safety and effectiveness at emergency scenes. We are forcing our incident commanders to try and command while simultaneously carrying out hands-on task-level assignments. NIOSH is a government agency responsible for evaluating, um, the cause of firefighter deaths and serious injuries. The NIOSH five are common elements found in incidents involving firefighter deaths. The first four, inadequate risk assessment, lack of incident command, lack of accountability and insufficient communications, are all directly impacted when we don't have the early arriving BC to assume command. We've been lucky, but we're taking a serious risk that we can now alleviate. Also having the BC as an independent unit is a force multiplier. They can be flexible and assist on, uh, calls in the outlying areas of town that might otherwise require an engine to respond and be out of position. They'll also be able to arrive faster, um, and serve in the two-in-one-out or two-in-two-out capacity that I know we've discussed multiple times in the past, uh, for imminent rescue. All right. That was easy. I think this is really kind of the, the meat, um, of what we needed. I believe that operationally, um, there's not really a good argument to be made, um, to not make this move. Um, obviously it's budget season. We've already been discussing the difficult times that we're facing. So I want to spend quite a bit of time talking about the financial impact of this grant. First, I just want to point out that this has been a specific plan for the past two years. As you recall, back in January, we, um, ordered the, the unit, the battalion chief car, um, to make this program work. We promoted the battalion chiefs who were captains previously, and then refilled those positions with lieutenants in preparation, um, for this upcoming year. Um, kind of in a more general way, we've been working towards, um, a nine-person daily staffing since 2016 with resolution 1946. And one upside to this is if this is approved tonight, you won't have to hear me talk about 1946 ever again. I know it's come up a time or two. one thing I just want, also want to point out is, so when we started this process, we intended to fund these positions, um, with EMS levy dollars. Remember last year that the voters approved, um, to up the rate from 44 cents to 47 cents? Um, and if you look down at the bottom left there in those charts, you'll see the impact that made, um, in EMS levy contributions to COA. In 2024, it was 1.5 million. That's what I've been using as the baseline. And then each year after that, you'll see it increase. Um, and you'll see by 2025, it was about 627,000. And this year, or next year, 713,000. So that was the intent. Um, you'll see there up at the top left in the blue, um, that reflects the numbers based on just that plan. Um, the three FTEs in 2026, we anticipated being around 600,000. When we wrote the grant, they asked for, um, the average cost of a first-year firefighter, because we hire both entry-level and laterals and paramedics and EMTs. Um, some have families, some don't. We kind of worked through those numbers. We, we ended up kind of landing on a step-two paramedic, um, as the base wage, and then kind of middle of the road as far as benefits, um, and how we, we, that's, that's the number we submitted when we put the grant application in. Um, also just, it was, um, I don't know if it was good fortune or bad fortune, depending on perspective, but also we did have a resignation here last month of, um, the assistant chief, and that opened up about another 225,000, um, that we're able to allocate to this program now, um, which certainly, um, improves, um, our financial outlook. Can't say that having only one AC is a good thing. Um, what I would say is that it's more important to make this move and get the BCs out and be flexible. I think it's one thing we can, the more of the personnel we put out on the street doing the job versus in the office with me, um, if we have to choose, that's the place to put them. If you look over at the green box, again, it's those same numbers, but, um, then with the Safer Grant, um, kind of thrown in. The Safer Grant will net about 1.1, uh, million dollars over the three-year period. But kind of the, the big deal that I, that I think is really important to us right now, if you look down at the brown box, if you took away and, and disregarded the, the levy funding completely and any other increases, and we just look at the AC position savings plus the Safer Grant, over the next two years, in '26 and '27, about $75,000 a year is a net benefit to the general fund. In other words, if we chose not to go forward with this plan, we'd really have to refill that AC spot. There's no way for Chief McDonald and I, um, to rotate that duty on a 50% basis and, and keep up with any form of administrative responsibilities, not even counting the, um, lack of training and the lack of, of skill that we're currently having out in the field. We just can't, oh, I think we were both great firefighters once, um, enough years in the office and that kind of, that kind of degrades a little bit. I hate to admit it, but it's, it's certainly true. And really that's kind of it for the presentation. Um, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Um, you know, I was hesitant about being the first person, but you know, and that's probably not unusual for your expectation of me. Um, you know, I'm very much supportive of the work that's, um, been done. I mean, the guys and the people have done an extraordinary job of not only helping us as a community to be rock solid and moving things forward. And so I applaud that. And I also applaud the fact of being able to have the grant to come in to help us in this process. The only question I have that I, I, I would like a little bit more of you elaborate on is after the three years, you know, after the three years, then what? What's the cost associated with it? And I guess my worry and how I want you to shape the answer to that question is that my worry is about where we are now economically as a city and trying to find the dollars that we've already heard everybody else mentioning before about, um, trying to pencil out. I think that's what, uh, our, um, super accountant did to us. Um, but you, I guess what I'm looking for is after three years, what are those costs associated with it? I recognize that we need it. I recognize that it would be a help. I recognize that, you know, as a community, there are standards we want to keep. And that the heaviness of having to shift back and forth between trying to maintain responsibilities at the level we are accustomed to. My question is really after three years, you know, because what that may, if you can help us understand that the rising cost of employee costs and everything else, and just given where we are right now, that's my concern. It has nothing to do with supporting this move, because I do believe in this being a great thing for us. But my concern is after three years, what are those costs going to be like? And, and to be honest, I'm just a little worried about three year. I know this is about now for this three years and accepting this. I think that's the thing we should do. But I also think that you should speak to what happens after three years. What are those costs associated with that such that we can begin to anticipate what we might need to do in order to address it?
No, absolutely. The, uh, so with that, uh, one thing I'd like to point out is the intent was, again, to utilize those EMS levy funds. And those grow by about $90,000 a year, each year. So if the budget were currently stable and we had followed that plan, we'd just follow that. And that would continue to grow along with these employees. Um, realizing that might not be realistic. I mean, it's, I'm going to be working with you and the mayor to, um, I'm going to try to claw those back, you know, and work for other ways inside of our budget. I do believe that as a city, I think we've reached the point where we have to make some decisions structurally and make some decisions as, as citizens and council and department heads, what services we want to provide moving into the future. Our citizens have a certain expectation. Are we going to increase funding, um, to get there? Are we going to cut services? I can't answer all those questions. I will tell you that from the fire department perspective, I'm looking at things, um, like an ambulance utility. I'm doing some research. And if you're kind of, is that a way for us to fund long-term in the future? Um, we're having discussions about regionalization. Are things like fire authorities the future to, to take? That's a whole nother conversation that takes the fire department off the city books, um, and changes how we, how we fund completely. And I don't know the answer to those questions. That's, that's a decision. Obviously, those are all political decisions, policy decisions. But that's the information I'm going to be prepared to provide you over the next couple of years to make those decisions easier.
Yeah, if I could just, thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, just, I can appreciate that. I, I really do. You know, because we are at a place where we're having to look at, you know, where are our priorities and what we want to fund, or what we can fund might be a better thing. And, um, but also at the same time, recognizing the hard work of the, you know, you guys do for the calls that are coming in, rescuing and making sure everybody's okay is a wonderful thing. And I appreciate that. But, you know, my question has so little to do with the quality of work, because the quality of what you guys are doing is extraordinary, and it's applaudable. The worry is what do we do, um, three years from now? So I, I know you can't answer that, but I just wanted to sort of put that out there, that as we're looking at our dollars and cents, trying to figure out where we can, um, trim and yet provide the highest level of service possible with what we have to work for. And so, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, looking at your previous slide, um, I, if I'm reading this right, uh, your blue box on the left is your, um, status quo proposal without the Safer Grant.
Yes.
Uh, but with the additional three FTEs that would backfill the positions that are moving up because you've, you're going to move these battalion chiefs out of the, the units.
Yeah, the, the, the blue box would be the three new FTEs, take away the current AC, um, and then utilizing the levy funds to, to pay for it.
Right. And the levy funds theoretically, I guess, could be moved around. They could be, they could fill other needs in the department, reduce general revenue that is supporting the department and thus be fully utilized. the department, and thus be fully utilized while we reduce our general revenue support of the department. But if we were to do that, we would be going backwards when we're asking, when we, when the county asks the voters for more money for the public safety levy. So I'm certainly not advocating that, just pointing that out. But my, I guess my point here, though, is that in the blue chart, that's without the SAFER grant. And you still end up positive in your net general fund change.
Yeah.
So that's not a charge to the general fund.
Utilizing the 1.5 million as the baseline from ES levy funds, it ends up as a net, yeah.
Right. So if you, my, my, my point to counsel here is, if you consider those levy funds properly spent on the fire department without reducing the existing general fund revenue going to the fire department, we do end up still ahead of the game.
And that's, I mean, that's kind of how I'd like to look at it for the next three years, is kind of go back in time a little bit and continue to think of it as the levy funds funding it. That way, in three years' time, they continue to fund it. Well, in the meantime, the 1.1 million dollars that's coming in through the SAFER grant can be utilized for whatever, whatever other purposes we need to help balance the budget and keep things moving, so.
Yeah, I recognize it's very arguable or debatable, how we characterize some of those funds. But still, just based on looking at the status quo, we end up ahead. And then we end up quite a bit more ahead if we accept the SAFER grant, which I don't, I don't see, I don't see acceptance of the SAFER grant as something that we should reasonably be debating, because we applied for the grant, we got the grant, we've applied for this grant multiple times before and not gotten this grant. I think it's an achievement. We got it. And I don't think we want to reject a significant grant like this. So I'm definitely in favor of accepting the SAFER grant. The three FTEs that we would add, I think, really do make sense in moving the battalion chiefs out of those units. Actually, the chief and I both took EOC training, FEMA EOC training a couple of weeks ago. And while that was really focused on EOC, they did talk about, and it wasn't an ICS training, they did talk about the importance of having an incident commander in the field, which is basically what we're talking about in terms of battalion chief. For any complex situation, there's got to be somebody in charge who doesn't have to do something else. And so, simply from an operational perspective, I think it is a very compelling argument. I mean, we've already created the battalion chief positions, so they're already there, but they have other duties right now. And so I think it is a very compelling argument to pull them out, put them in their own vehicle, have them be capable of running an incident when we have one, really running it without having other duties. So I'm supportive of this. I think in three years, again, we're still going to have more money under, than we currently do, under some characterization of how the money works. But in three years, we need to be figuring out a better financial position generally for the city. That's certainly going to be a top priority. You and I haven't had this conversation, but I do not support a regional fire authority at this point, simply because it seems like in any regional system, especially anyone that involves something beyond the east of the Suez Canal, we seem to get the short end of the stick. And I think we have a good level of service right now. We have an excellent fire department, and I'm not confident that we would improve the situation if we went to a regional fire authority, especially a large one where resources could get drained from Anacortes. But, you know, maybe there's some characterization of that where it does work. But I'm very hesitant about that, even though it would look financially really attractive for the rest of the city's finances. I'd be really concerned about lowering our level of service. I think the level of service that we provide the public right now is good, and especially, it's a lot better since the levy lid lift. And I don't want it to grade it.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I'm also supportive of accepting the SAFER grant. I feel like we've heard about the battalion chief plan for a few years, and this kind of is the actual funding to make it a reality, at least the way that I've heard it discussed and will be, will be operating. So I'm in favor of it. I think that also, you know, yes, we're going to have some tough, some tough budget decisions coming up in the future, probably three years down the line from now. But I can pretty confidently say, I don't, I don't feel like public safety is an area that we want to be scrimping, at least. Not when my house is on fire, and I'm sure not when the rest of ours is either. So, so, yeah, I'm very supportive of moving this forward.
I just want to point out, those tough budget decisions will be coming to you in a matter of weeks, not, not years. And to Mr. Young's point about the long-term, I share those same concerns. Operationally, I don't think anybody on council disagrees. Stick figures aside, it is, of course, the right operational, operational move. It's the, absolutely would provide the best service possible. The issue that, that we've been talking about are the concerns with the long-term sustainability of funding, just like where we are now. Sorry, counsel, anybody else?
Mayor Miller.
Mrs. Cleland McGrath.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for going out for this grant, working really hard and applying. I know it was, we've applied in the past. To actually get, to receive it is a huge deal. So I know that was a ton of work for the fire department to complete. I think I shared some of my concerns that Mr. Young kind of alluded to. I shared some of those concerns at our public safety meeting with the intent that I wanted to see kind of the, I wanted to see a really well-articulated justification for why those battalion chiefs being pulled off one of the engines and backfilling that position, so we have 12 in rotation at a time, is a much better model and safer for the fire department and safer for the public. So I think that you articulated that quite well at this presentation. I am concerned how we're going to pay for, you know, four years from now, but that goes hand-in-hand with, you know, having to prioritize and making sure we try to increase our revenue sources as effectively as possible. And going back to kind of the goal that our levy lid lift was, was about increasing staffing and making sure that when someone is in an emergency and they pick up the phone and call 911, there are human beings there that are able to care for them responsibly. And so I think that this really articulates, and you showed that, why we need that, this kind of final step to finish the levy lid lift and make sure that our level of service is at a point that our community wants and expects. So I am in favor of this, and I appreciate the effort put forward for the grant for three years to kind of soften our challenging budget years. And hopefully, we, as council and staff, figure out how to prioritize our commitments that we have for the community and our level of service, not just with fire, but also everything else, and then also increase our revenue. So, thank you. My, I do have one question. I don't want you to have to, like, be on the spot, so if you don't want to answer. But that second assistant chief position, are you, where is that going to be? Is that going to be grayed out? Is that going to be removed? Have you given that any thought that you want to share publicly, or is that something for a future discussion?
No, so what I'm requesting is if we unfund it. I don't want to take it off the books. I think that someday, we need to take a look at it again in some format, whether it's a fire marshal or an ops chief or a training chief. I don't know. One thing that as we, so some of the responsibilities will be shifted down to the battalion chiefs. Some of the training, some of the inspections, they're doing, they'll be doing more of that. And frankly, give us an opportunity for a couple of years to really evaluate, you know, where that deep need is. Can we handle it with two? I mean, if we can, then we're saving some, you know, long-term money, so.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think I would remove that position from the org chart. If it's not funded and it's intended to be vacant for three years, it seems unlikely that at year four, we are going to have more money to fill in the SAFER grant money and hire the, an assistant chief. But also, if we look at a different position, I mean, we may look at a different position. I mean, a fire marshal, a fire code official, a fire inspector, some, some other position. I, I think it, I don't think it makes sense to just leave it on the org chart and unfunded. I think it makes more sense to just delete it from the org chart and expect to operate without it. We will be adding firefighters again in the future. Our population will continue to grow. Our service demand will continue to grow. So we will just have to evaluate what it looks like at that time. I mean, that would be my preference, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, my only argument to that is, when, when dealing with city councils, and it changes all the time, is, is once it's gone, then you're, it's, I feel like it's starting from scratch, as I'm trying to educate the, whatever council makeup is here in four or six years. But hopefully, that'll be my successor's problem.
A burden to carry.
Yeah, it, it doesn't change anything for me, whether it was there or not, but other than just that, so, yeah.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Just follow up on that with a little bit more banter. You know, the, the truth of the matter is that you guys have really truly performed. And for us, that's the measurement we look at. And, and that's, in my opinion, have been stellar. And so, you know, even though the reluctance to take it off the org chart, I think, and the requests that's been coming forward have, you know, reasonably been very fair, and has always been about safety and service. So, you know, I think if you continue that, it, it won't be as much of an issue. You know, the biggest thing we'll be, at least I will be looking at, is how do we fund it? And, you know, and the net tangible value of funding it to the cost versus what do we get with it? And, you know, so far, I think you guys have done a really good job about it. And so, you know, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, Chief, for this excellent presentation. I feel like it's really well-laid out, the financials, everything. Thank you for including the org chart for tonight that some of us asked for. That is helpful. And I would not be opposed to taking that position off of it. It would just be nice to just have that clean for now, in my opinion. But again, this could be talked about later. Congratulations on the grant for working so hard to get it. I think it's 15% of applicants get it. It's major. It's beautifully, it's a great accomplishment. So I do, I do fully support this. It's going to make us a better, safer city with the kind of response that we count on really every day, and that we'll continue to be able to do that. So thanks for all your work.
And just one thing with that, is I, I appreciate the thank yous and such. The truth is, I did very little work on the grant itself. The folks sitting back in the audience behind me did a whole bunch of typing and a whole bunch of research to make this happen. So just to pass that on to them.
Mayor Miller.
Yeah, Ms. Hubick.
I move to authorize the mayor to accept the fiscal year 2024 SAFER grant award and create three new fire department FTEs beginning in 2026.
Second.
Read my mind. Thank you. Motion by Ms. Hubick, second by Mr. Young to authorize the acceptance of this SAFER grant as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Francioc, vote please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief, and thanks to the wonderful Anacortes Fire Department. Next up, item 6D. This is access Anacortes fiber internet presentation with associated ordinance 5007. And Ms. Hsu, you're almost pulling up the presentation.
Mayor, council, members of the audience, I'm pleased tonight to provide an update on access Anacortes fiber internet. I recognize that the fiber committee meets regularly, and we go over this information, but that I haven't been in front of you for a while to do that. As part of this presentation, we also have an ordinance that's included. And this would be the first read of that, with the hope that we can bring it back next week and move forward with that. So I always think that it's important for me to, to go back and reevaluate, review the business plan goals that we put together back in 2019, when we were first thinking about building a fiber network. And we had seven specific things that we needed to do or wanted to do. And I feel pleased to be able to be in front of you tonight and say, yes, we, we're doing that. We're, we're meeting those goals. The first was to deliver high-speed residential and business internet at competitive prices. That we're going to do, always have excellent customer service, that we're going to have a market share. So let's say, every 100 houses that we pass, that we would have 35 of those 100 houses, businesses or residences that had selected our service as their internet service provider. That we're going to be paying for our construction liabilities with subscriber revenue, and that includes loans, and we did go out to bond last year. That we would achieve the payback of those construction within 15 to 20 years, and that would become cash flow positive in two to three years. That this would help to spur local business development and economic growth. And I can affirmatively check every one of those boxes. And it's, you know, because of the support, the council's, the support of the community in selecting our service, that that has been possible. And so, as we were putting this together, what we always came back down to is, what is our value proposition? And it was hinged on four items, that we're going to have faster speeds at lower prices, that we're going to be local and provide very reliable service. The rates that you're seeing here are the rates that we put in place initially, and they still remain in effect. It also doesn't require a contract for our residential customers. So you can sign up today, and we need to earn your trust every single day with our service. If you're unhappy with it, you can go ahead and cancel it. You're not tied into a long-term contract. With our business plans, we do require a 12-month contract. So the, you know, the high-speed internet really does benefit Anacortes as a whole. It helps to expand local business opportunities. So for our storefronts that decide to have an online marketplace, it's a great expansion opportunity for them to get out into the market. We definitely saw the importance during COVID with homeschooling, about the importance of being able to attend school remotely and continue that. Education opportunities now are a norm, that we, we can always fall back to that. It also has built different employment opportunities in the community. And we've had people that have told us that they have specifically chosen to either relocate their businesses or to purchase homes in Anacortes because of the ability to have that high-speed internet access through the, through the city, that that was one of their decision-making points when they were making that decision. Telemedicine options have certainly increased, and the ability to have that high-speed internet does help with that. Saves time and money, because when you have internet-only services, there are no taxes associated with that. And it means that you get one bill from the city, and so one less check or bill pay that you need to figure out every month. And studies continue to show that having broadband connection can increase a home's value up over 3%. So, and then we talked about the business development. So this is our current fiber availability map, and I'm really pleased to see all of the green. And we have a couple areas that we are continuing to finish the construction on our EDA area, that was the Economic Development Administration. So, and we have a timeframe to have that done by, by next spring. And that will also include the ability to have those connections in place. So, you know, congratulations to the Anacortes community that this is actually coming to fruition. Tonight, I am presenting ordinance 5007, and it's an update to the Anacortes municipal code. And it's a new section that we're adding in the municipal code area that addresses municipal fiber, 13.56.06. And it's an open data transport policy. This is another opportunity for us to potentially work with other service providers who may want to, to purchase some infrastructure through the city's infrastructure to provide their services. And so, we were very careful as we were putting that language together and trying to figure out a way that would take into account what we have paid in the, the construction. And so And so that it would be very similar to what we have in terms of other leases that we have with the city, where we lease dark fiber from some people and they lease fiber from us and things. So this also makes reference to chapter 1.30 of the Anacortes Municipal Code. And this is the section that addresses which contracts the mayor has authorized to sign in regard to municipal fiber contracts and which contracts or agreements I'm able to sign.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
With respect to the ordinance text, I just wanted to point out that the fiber committee reviewed the proposed language, and we had a meeting beforehand and offered some feedback, and including Mr. McDougal, who has some expertise in these matters.
Thank you, that was something I definitely wanted to mention as well. So this is just a sample, some pictures of different installations. And maybe I did a disservice to the team because it looks like we only provide these services on beautiful sunny days. But on rainy and wet and pouring buckets days, staff are out making these connections, you know, to homes and businesses in Anacortes, so. And the results really are shown here. This is an update from what was included in the packet. I wanted to make sure that we had the numbers of installations correct as of end of business today. So as of this afternoon, we have 2,813 customers in service. You can look across all the different kind of areas of the different projects, segments that we've had, that we have just under 55% take rate. If you, if you think back to what our business plan was, it required a 35% take rate. So we are more than, more than meeting that. And we're bringing in monthly revenue of over $175,000 a month. That continues to grow, and we're looking forward to, you know, continuing that trend. We do have over 1,300 additional customers who have orders in now that are still waiting to get put into service. I think there are a couple on the dais even, so that are, that are coming shortly, so. So, you know, just a reminder that we are local. When, when people call and have a question in regard to access Anacortes fiber internet, they're talking to somebody here in town. We know the neighborhoods, we know, you know, specific information about Anacortes. So it's an easy person to talk to locally. But really, I also want to mention that Jim Lindberg, who is our broadband business manager, and really brought the communications background and the expertise to help with some of the very detailed work that needed to be happening as we were building and constructing the network, is retiring at the end of October. So I just wanted to publicly just thank him for his time, his expertise, his attention to detail, and let you know that he definitely will be missed, but I am very excited for him as he moves on to exploring retirement. So just, you know, if you see Jim, please make a point to reach out and just to express your thanks for what he's done for our fiber. So, does anybody have any questions?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hsu, and of course, thank you to Jim Lindberg, kind of the father of access Anacortes fiber.
Yes.
Okay, council. Great, greatest presentation ever, and.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
I just wanted to take a quick moment, since you're giving thanks to Jim, to say, I had a couple, there have been a couple people that have come into the bank to see me, and I can always tell when someone is coming in to talk about city business because they head right to my desk. And I always get a little nervous, not sure what they're going to say. But to your point earlier about how great it is to have locals on this team, more than a few times, there have been praises sung of the teams that are doing these installs and just how careful they are, how friendly they are, so just a huge shout out to that team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 6E, resolution is next, 3181, city council procedures. This is a discussion item with possible action. And Ms. Swetnam, you must have thought there was going to be a bunch more questions, Ms. Hsu, no, kidding, all right. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Swetnam is going to talk to council about the updated council procedures.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council, and remaining members of the audience. So tonight, in lieu of slides, I'm going to go through the red line version of resolution 3188, which is what updates the council procedures based on the meetings that we had, the work session and the subsequent discussion. So just kind of to start with, big thanks to Ms. Hsu and to Mayor Miller. We've worked collaboratively to try to capture all of your comments and feedback. So we looked back at notes from those meetings and the comments that everybody submitted, as well as Mr. Francioc's notes. So my plan here is just to go through this, and please stop as we, as we work through sections with any comments or feedback, if I've missed something, if we've inaccurately reflected something. And we may, we may not get through all of this tonight, that's okay, too, so. So table contents, obviously updated. I note that there's some formatting.
Mr. Walters?
I also want to say I thought staff did a great job of capturing all of our input. I have some edits, but that doesn't mean I didn't think that overall it was a great job. The, the resolution on page one, though, says the resolution takes effect five days after publication.
Correct.
Would we strike that?
Sure.
Yeah, we talked about that one, that's, that's a good, good.
To have it be effective January 1, right?
Or pick a date for council, that's, I think, what we talked about.
Yeah. It's just we wouldn't even, we wouldn't publish a resolution, right, so.
You might want to pick a date, I think, is the point.
We might want to pick a date.
Sure. Thank you, good, good, good note there.
I forgot about that one, sorry.
Yeah, me too. So that's why we're doing this, this is helpful. I just, I want to mention that there are obviously some formatting issues. Those will get cleaned up as we get the content finalized. And so we, it is not my intention that we will have these long paragraphs in the index. We'll get that, we'll get that fixed.
Yeah, so just shout out if you see something, I think is the best way.
So, so starting with page one of actual substance, I did put in the link, Ms. Comment, or I'm sorry, Ms. Hsu provided a comment. This is the link to the MRSC kind of onboarding for council members and electeds that we talked about during the study session. Moving on to 1.1, there was a comment that we wanted to better identify council's authority in the procedures. So the current procedures do talk generally about the city council having authority to adopt procedures, governing how you all work. So we just tried to add in some additional color there to fully express that council has broad authority, as described in the statute, to adopt procedures. Okay, there was a comment to replace, in places where it was appropriate, the term mayor with chair when we were talking more generically about whoever was running the council meeting.
Really?
Ms. Moulton?
So in section, all right, 2.2D, it says if the mayor and mayor pro tem are unavailable at chair of council meeting, the council members in attendance will appoint a chair. Did we not decide that that was just going to be the most recent mayor pro tem? Or?
That's certainly an option. The notes I had from the discussion was, we should come up with something, Darcy come up with something. So this is what I came up with, but I'm happy to change that as council would like to change it.
And the previous was, was just going by tradition, so.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
I would advocate that, I mean, I think that that just makes sense and that, that, you know, de-necessitates any conversation of like, who should it be?
And it turned out that's what you all did.
Right.
So.
So the, so the remaining council member with the most, with the longest tenure on council?
No, you're comfortable with this.
The previous mayor pro tem.
Oh, the previous mayor pro tem, okay.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Oh, Mr. Walters?
I actually like the language that Ms. Swetnam came up with over the most recent mayor pro tem. Because the most recent mayor pro tem might not be on council anymore, might have gotten voted out. So it could become more complicated. And this happens so infrequently, like it just happened last week, last week?
Yes.
It seems ages ago, but, and so it was really easy.
Okay, so, fine. I take it back.
All good.
But it's good, I mean, there were definitely some places in the draft where Emily and the mayor and I talked about it, we just had to recommend something to start the discussion, so I think that's a, that's a good, a good point. Okay, so moving on, we'll leave that alone. There was a lot of discussion about, in several different of the buckets that we talked about, what the expectations and duties are for the clerk treasurer. And so you'll see this kind of reflected in a few places throughout the draft. But, so we added in here that the clerk treasurer, in addition to preparing the agenda, will prepare all council meeting notices, will collect and record written public comments, which is something that happens now anyways, that that person will note any requests for information made during a council meeting and follow up to ensure the requested information is provided in a timely manner. And that they will note any questions asked by members of the public during the public comment period and forward those questions to the staff member best able to respond. And run that by Greg or Steve first, but they do that already. Okay. Moving on, so this was not discussed, but I added there was an existing section on special meetings. Just to be clear, to comply with Open Public Meetings Act, there needs to always be an opportunity for public comment, even at those special meetings.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, that is one I had highlighted. I thought the new OBMA requirement was for public comment before final action, but not at all meetings. I mean, I think of, you know, like a retreat might be a special meeting, a meeting of the PSRC might be a special meeting, where we might not even be able to achieve a public comment period.
I'm happy to go back and double check that. Yeah, my understanding is that we would need to have a public comment period as special meeting, but I, but I may have overlooked something, so.
Well, and I might be wrong about that, that too. And I know that the, the requirement for final action is for comment, but not necessarily verbal comment either. But I just thought for special meetings, there would actually probably be circumstances where you have special types of meetings that it doesn't make sense.
Okay, that's, yeah, great, we'll definitely double check that. Okay, there was a comment to clarify when an executive session can be called. Per the statute, council can convene to executive session at any time during the meeting if that need comes up during the meeting. So this additional language just clarifies that. Again, we're talking sort of generically about adjourning to executive session, replace mayor with chair. There was a comment to articulate the procedure for going into an executive session. And I felt like maybe we've already got that laid out here in subsection B, where we say that the chair will announce the general topic with a specific RCW citations, specify whether council will reconvene afterwards, the estimated amount of time, and announce that council will take any final action. I think that that covers all of the points in the statute that we're required to announce we're going to executive session. But if there are additional procedures that council would like to see articulated there, I'm happy to add that in. There was some kind of discussion about adding script language in the procedures, and I did not do that because it felt awkward and like we were putting too many words in the procedures when I, when I tried to put that in. Seems like not exactly, you know, council procedure language to have scripts in the procedures, if that makes sense, but.
It seemed more like chair procedures.
Correct. Okay, moving on. There was a comment to clarify, of course, council members or participants in executive session are prohibited from disclosing the contents of that discussion. And so there was a request to clarify that any unauthorized disclosure and violation of the subsection would be a violation of 42230704, just correct, and subject the disclosing party to the penalties outlined in 4223050. Retreats, I just added the subsection that wasn't there. Getting down into council meeting, attendance required. There was a fair bit of discussion about a limit for council members participating in absentia. Different numbers were thrown out, but I had in my notes that we kind of coalesce on 12, which is a quarter of the meetings throughout the year, so. That makes sense? There, this was a kind of a question that Ms. Hsu noted, actually, that we had in here that the clerk treasurer has to distribute the agenda to council members and publish it at least five days prior to the meeting. And usually, if something is less than a week, when we say five days, it would be five business days. But in fact, we do have five calendar days, so we clarified that. And so council members adding something to an agenda. If the mayor declines that request, we reduced from three to two council members who can override that decision from the mayor.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I remember that we had some discussion about the number of council members for things, but with this change, it, it seems to necessitate other changes to that paragraph. Because the previous or the currently adopted concept is any two council members can submit something to be put on some future agenda, and three council members can submit something to be put on the next agenda, sort of forcing the timing of it as well. I don't, I don't, I don't feel the need to make this change from three to two. But if we do make the change, then it, it seems that we need to make other changes in the paragraph. But, but do, do others feel the need to make the change from three to two here?
Go ahead.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Oh, my thought was that, okay, so two people can get something on the agenda, the mayor can say no, and then two, two people can get on the agenda. It's almost like, why can't two people just get on in the first place without the mayor's agreement? Rather than, I mean, it seems like if two doesn't work, then you would add the next three? The next person to make it three, do you know what I mean?
Yep.
Doesn't make sense.
It's a, yeah, I mean, one's a time, one's a time limit to give a more amount of time, and the other's a short-term request, I guess. But, yeah, go ahead and chime in, we'll try to treat this like a workshop to move through it.
Mayor Miller?
Yeah.
I just have a quick question. So it talks about the mayor may decline to put a requested item on agenda that is inappropriate, untimely, unrelated to the business of the city. And then two council members support the agenda request, it has to be included on the agenda. So does that kind of, is that like, sorry, I'm trying to get this worked out in my head. So the mayor can't stop two members from putting something on the agenda, or can still?
That's what it's, that's how I read that.
Okay.
It kind of just creates an extra step, right? If two, if two council members can override the mayor's decision not to put the item on the agenda, it's just extra process, but, so it's up to council how you want to handle that.
Mayor Miller?
Yeah, go ahead.
I remember, my memory, if it's accurate, we had this discussion and we didn't, I didn't think that we, our conclusion was that we needed to reduce it from three to two. My, my takeaway was that we should leave it as is, and I still feel that way. I think if it's two nominating it, the mayor's fine with it, it moves forward. If it's something that is really necessary and timely, which I think we've seen a couple of times, yeah, make, if you can get three council members to agree on it, then yeah, I think it should be, the timeline should be accelerated. So I would, I would go back. So I would, I would go back to the if three council members support the agenda request.
I agree. I actually agree with that, and I do have that in my notes, that we had a pretty thorough discussion around it at the roundtable. And we left it at three.
Objections? No, okay.
Great. So in that, that section, we deleted on the second and fourth regular meeting of each month, items requiring final action should not be scheduled. We've addressed the work session differently in here, so that.
Quick, one other small clarification, sorry. Just recently starting to not be able to see, so I've added these and I'm not used to them. When it talks about publishing the agenda, is that just the agenda? That's not the entire packet? Is that correct? Or is it five calendar days to publish the agenda? Does that include the entire packet or just the agenda?
You're talking about here?
It's on five, five point one, five point one B.
So that's, the agenda is the, is just the agenda, it's not the packet?
Just the agenda, not the packet.
We get to the packet in five point four. Yeah. Okay, so great segue to section five point four, which is information from staff. So this is a new section of the procedures. And the attempt here was to flesh out what council needs staff to provide in the packets and give some, some guidelines there. So staff will provide all materials related to each agenda item in the city council packet, which will be published the week prior to the meeting. So I didn't put a number of days, just because having done this for a decade, there are definitely weeks where there's a lot of stuff on the agenda, or there are big items that are considered back-to-back at, you know, one week and then the next week. And so without being too prescriptive, trying to get a little bit of flex in case all the materials aren't able to be published by Wednesday. So materials must include any documents, whoops, sorry, or information necessary for council to fully prepare to discuss and decide on agenda items. Staff may not present new information to council at a council meeting, but may summarize materials from the packet in their presentation.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
So that line there, I think, is much too constraining. The, the prohibition on allowing staff to present new information at a council meeting. I think the objective was something significantly different than that. Like, put your information into your packet. If you're, if you're bringing summaries for the council meeting that are a PowerPoint form that weren't in the packet, that's great, that's fine. But I would definitely either delete that line or substantially rework it. I, I think it's even fine without the line being in there. Maybe it's a little too prescriptive. But I just don't, I don't think staff should be told they may not present new information at a council meeting.
I really agree with that because I'm worried that we'll get not as good information.
Appreciate that. We were trying to interpret. Ultimately comes back to what I always tell the staff, bring good agenda bills and you won't have any trouble, you know.
Well, and what about something like staff are encouraged to or encourage, we can, we can either delete or wordsmith and come back with a recommendation.
Ms. Moulton.
I think delete.
Okay.
Delete, okay.
Thank you.
In, in your prior sentence, where necessary for council to fully prepare, I think largely captures it. You know, or alternatively, or in addition to, you could say, fully describe the proposal or something like that in the packet.
Okay. Great. If the agenda item includes a physical location, a map must be included.
Thoughts, thoughts, okay. Put it, put it down in your procedures and the map will come.
Yeah. Okay.
Map's coming anyway, but.
So subsection B, every agenda item must be accompanied by a complete cover sheet that provides key information about that item. The cover sheet must include the following. So there was a discussion about having kind of separate requirements for contracts versus other agenda items. And the way we addressed that was by adding subpoint seven and eight, which are the, kind of the items that get added to contract agenda bills, which seem to sort of cover the, the, the important points that need to be added. So we just kind of added those on as additional requirements. So quickly, the agenda items that have to be included are background information, procedural history. I know council mentioned that it was really helpful to note where the item had come from, if it had been considered in the past. Budget information. I know there's some kind of dissatisfaction with the way that that's reflected now. So I tried to describe that a little bit more broadly by saying budget impact of the agenda item and any funding sources. Previous actions completed, again, summary and links to materials from previous council sessions. Staff contact, so I know there was some question about wanting to articulate what that means. The name of an individual staff member who council members may contact if they need additional information. Recommended action, if any, and then key terms and competitive bidding if we're talking about a contract. So the, the clerk treasurer or their designee will record and request, any requests for additional information made by council members during the meetings. Here again is where we kind of get back to some of those duties that the clerk treasurer has to make sure we're following up with council members when you have questions during the meeting, during the discussion of an agenda item.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I thought that that subparagraph is duplicative of the section where it talks about the clerk treasurer's responsibilities.
It is.
I, I don't, I think I would just delete that because I think that's covered elsewhere.
We actually discussed that exact point.
All right.
In the list of items under, under subsection B, we do talk a lot about capital projects and whether or not they are in the CFP. I wonder if we might reference that somewhere.
Mayor Miller.
Okay.
Ms. Hubick.
Could that just be added to the budget information section?
Uh-oh.
Like a subset of it? And then the other question that I had was how particular do we want to get with funding sources? Does it just need to be a descriptor, or does it need to be the set of numbers?
It's a good question.
Mayor Miller.
Yeah, Mr. Walters.
I also wondered about funding, like, right now we get bars numbers, which I think we universally don't find helpful. But a, a description of the funding source could be less technical and more informative. Like, we are going to fund this from TBD revenue, or, you know, whatever. Or eighty percent from that and twenty percent from this other thing, or.
Okay.
But I don't know if that, I don't know if that means we need to add more to this section, or if that can just be understood.
I mean, but we can, we can kind of work on the wording here to say budget information would include the budget impact of the agenda, a description of funding sources, and whether it relates to a, a project that's in a capital.
In the CFP, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good edits. New subpoint, which I guess will be moved up to C now. Staff will provide council with notice of quasi judicial matters that may come before city council for consideration so that council can avoid ex parte communication and violation of the appearance of fairness doctrine.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
This one I did not think fit here because it's, it doesn't have to do with what's happening in a meeting. It, it needs to be conveyed much earlier. So I don't know where it should live, maybe section. I don't have a suggestion.
Yeah, we, 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 we were trying to find a good section to put this in.
The whole information from staff concept started out a little more broad than how it ended up, so I take your point. We'll see, we'll find a better place to put that in. Okay. All right. Moving on. So consent agenda items, these are items eligible for inclusion in the consent agenda. There were a couple of these that we specifically talked about. There were recommendations from the legal department and from the contract staff, specifically seven. We have a lot of public works contracts under two hundred thousand dollars that aren't publicly bid. Again, purchase or personal services. Oftentimes, those are agreements that are not on standard city forms. They come from service providers or contractors that insist on using their contracts. We added in here contracts for goods, materials, and supplies not connected with a public works project less than or equal to a hundred thousand dollars. And these next two are places where I just put a dollar figure in to kind of let council start the discussion. We did talk about the fact that there are some inter-local agreements that maybe ought to be able to be included on the consent agenda because they're relatively straightforward or include a low dollar threshold. I think Mr. Walters during the discussion brought up a really good point that sometimes those low dollar figure inter-local agreements have a lot of impact and have a lot of importance to the community. So whether it's a, a dollar figure or some other metric that council would like, you know, do, do, do you all want to allow some inter-local agreements to be eligible for the consent agenda?
And, and again, I feel it's important to say that just because it's on the consent agenda does not mean any council member can pull it off and make it as a public discussion as they want it to be.
Correct. Mayor Miller.
Yeah, Ms. Moulton.
Could it be something like, I mean, there are some that we adopt year after year. Could it be, I'm just throwing this out here.
Previously approved, or?
Yes.
Something.
Okay.
And I'm just, I mean, I'm not married to that idea, like, but it seems reasonable.
Other thoughts?
Mayor Miller.
Yep, Mr. Walters.
I think at first glance, I was not concerned about the, even the, just the dollar threshold. Under modifications to inter-local agreements, I thought maybe an additional adjective, like simple modifications, or something, you know, non-controversial.
Okay.
Don't, not, but that word in, but, you know, ordinary.
Guessing which ones are non-controversial is fraught with peril.
Okay. We can, we can, we can think about that, some, some additional, because the ones that we had in mind when we were recommending that were the no-cost time extension modifications to inter-local agreements for funding, where we don't get through spending all the money, so.
Yeah, what's the one word that captures that?
Cost neutral, maybe.
Maybe. Maybe even with some costs would be okay. Again, because we can pull them off. Yeah.
True. And then modifications of any contract less than or equal to a hundred thousand dollars or ten percent of the total contract amount, whichever is less. This comes up sometimes with, you know, projects, construction projects, where we have a lot of little, you know, small contract modifications. But because the original project, you know, may be over whatever needs to come to council, you end up with a number of modifications that end up being stuck in the other business section and warrant a full presentation, which might be overkill. Okay, we'll do, we'll do some more work on that section and. Okay, so the work sessions. So my understanding, I think our understanding after the discussions about the conversation about the committee of the whole and work sessions versus committee meetings was that council was interested in a hybrid approach, where we built more regular work sessions into the schedule for all of council to talk about, kind of committee-type issues that you all wanted to participate in while still retaining some of the subcommittee structure. And you'll see later in the procedures, we consolidated some of the committees and tightened some of that up. But we built in a new section on work sessions. And, you know, that, that's just what we called these, these sort of committee-like discussions. But work sessions are council meetings that are less formal than regular business meetings, which allow for more in-depth consideration and evaluation of policy topics. Wanted to make it clear that no ordinances or resolutions may be adopted during work sessions. Frequency, we just threw out there at least once a month. But there wasn't, from my understanding, a consensus from council about how often you wanted to have those types of discussions. So if that's something you want to change. We did try to say at least once a month, so there's an option to schedule those work sessions more frequently than that if council's working on something that you want to talk about in work session more often than once a month. And the procedures that we recommended was, first of all, the items can be placed on work session agendas following the same procedures as regular council meetings. And that could be, you know, two council members, members of a subcommittee. If you have a topic that you think should come before all of council, you can either ask the mayor to put it on the agenda, or two council members that are in that subcommittee can, can ask that it be put on the agenda. Work sessions may be scheduled either during a regular council meeting, or may be noted as a special meeting. So I know there was also some discussion about these could happen at five PM before a regular meeting, or they could be sessions that are discussed, you know, during part of the agenda for a regular business meeting.
Mayor Miller.
Walters.
I had thought that one of the objectives was to make the meetings single topic when they were work sessions. Allow for a consent agenda so we can pay bills, but then to only consider one topic so that the entire rest of the meeting could just be focused on that topic. Am I the only one who thought that?
I get, I don't think I had a thought on it either way. But my question would be like, I'm, I don't, not necessarily opposed to that, but like, for instance, if the topic is housing, then, I mean, is that free game of, like, how specific to the one item are we going to be? Like, if we're going to have a question, a work session around zoning and housing, and we talk about multifamily and cottages, or, like, I, I guess my question is, if we're going to do single topic, how specific does that box have to be?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick and then Mr. Young.
I think that you could use different phrasing, like streamlined topics, so that you allow for a variety of things to touch on, but you're not going to throw in necessarily transportation needs secondarily to a primary discussion. So yeah, single focus or streamlined or something like that. I, I think that that makes sense. I feel like that's the way that they should be done.
Sounds like it would be more productive that way.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young and then Walters.
You know, I, I totally, I, I understand the point about trying to concentrate the focus on the issue at hand. I, I really do recognize that. But again, I, I think if we wed ourselves to absolutely that one way as opposed to, let's say, two items, it doesn't mean that we have to get to both items. It may mean that the first item that we're discussing may carry over and that may be something we want to reevaluate for the next time. I like having that option, you know, because again, sometimes there are discussions that bloom, so to speak. And as a result of that, we, that conversation will need to go at length. It doesn't mean any disrespect to the second issue, but I think if we try to force the second issue, it creates a whole nother thing. And I think that the benefit of us trying to do a once a month if we can is that it allows those of us that, you know, really do respect all of the colleagues up here and the staff and the team. But sometimes I want to understand why you're thinking the way you do, because, you know, it would assume that I understand why you do. And, and so sometimes there's a bit more background that takes a little bit more time, but then sometimes it doesn't. And so if we do have the time and we got a second item on the agenda, I say let's move into it. But I think to wed it to only one minimizes a bit more than I would like the work session that we are trying to do in the discussions. You know, because if both of them go away, or one of them, we only have one on the agenda, goes away, yes, we can go on to the other items that we need to discuss of city matters. But I just am a little hesitant to say just one, but I wouldn't say any more than two.
Well, but, but I think what you're arguing, potentially one subject could be a planning department update.
Yes.
Could that be one subject? Mr. Walters is next.
So the reason I, the reason I posed that question is because, well, twofold. Under 7.3B, we're saying that you can schedule a work session during a regular council meeting, but we can put an item on the regular council meeting agenda now without any of this stuff about work sessions. So I thought what we were trying to do was get to a place where we could have, well, as described here, a in-depth consideration and evaluation of policy topics. And I thought the way we were achieving that was clearing everything else off the plate, no committee reports and, well, Pledge of Allegiance, yes, but, but, and, and the consent agenda, but not a whole bunch of other stuff and just do the one thing. That's, that's what I thought we were, we were doing. If we are inserting work sessions into the middle of a regular meeting agenda, then do you achieve those outcomes? Do you get the focus or do you feel like, well, we got these other things on the agenda, I kind of want to get to those, so I go home? So my concern is that. If it is a single topic or, or two topics, but, but if it is just the focus discussion, then I really wonder if we could find one for every month. And I think that the prescribed frequency here would be an error, that we shouldn't prescribe that. But you do have language in 11.5G, way down lower in the document, that I think should be brought up into this section. And it says, "Topics that span more than one council committee should be presented and discussed at work sessions to comply with the OPMA and avoid serial meetings." I, I think more fleshing out of the things that you want to do in a work session would be great in the work session section. Like what, why would you choose a work session format versus something else? Well, because it's a topic that spans more, one more than one council meeting, or it's really detailed and you need to spend a lot of time on it at one council meeting, or it involves multiple committees. That's somewhere in here, right?
Eleven.
Yeah.
Some, I thought something, I thought there was something about that. So having some of those details in that work session section, I think, would help us understand when to use them.
Great.
I think, Mrs. Cluham, you're up.
Thank you. I'm in agreement to, to just get rid of the frequency requirement. And I hear what Mr. Young is saying, but I also think that in 7.3C, I, that, it says, "Council may request specific materials prepared by staff in preparation for work sessions. Staff will prepare pocket materials following the same requirements for regular council meetings." To me, that's, that's what's going to articulate what, what the study session is going to be based on and the information. I mean, I, I don't want to have a situation where staff doesn't, is not fully prepared to discuss a topic or a couple of different departments aren't fully prepared to discuss a topic. And as council members, that we have some kind of material ahead of time. But that, to me, is where it would be defined for not only council but for the public. And I see those work sessions as opportunities if the public wants to have a, be able to observe and listen to one of those council of a whole discussions that are more, not necessarily on some agenda item, but just long-term planning or, or a subject matter. I think that that is articulated in the procedures. I would agree with Mr. Walters that, you know, things that span multiple departments or more, multiple committees for OPMA purposes makes a lot of sense for these work sessions. Um, yeah, I see them as kind of subject matters where it's, hey, this is an upcoming problem or an upcoming concern. We want to be able to have a roundtable discussion about it prior to seeing something put on the agenda like ordinance or a, a contract or something, right? Like, this is our opportunity to really have free-flowing discussion.
Mayor Miller? Ms. Maltin, did you have something?
I do, thank you. So I agree with not, I agree with deleting frequency and I also agree that it's a perfect opportunity for committee of the whole when the discussions span multiple committees. So for example, the event center, some public safety stuff that's going on that's involved, or like, you know, public works and planning, there are lots of those things. So I think that's, I, I'm, I like the idea of that.
Mayor Miller?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Miller. You know, just hearing the, my fellow council members and their perspective on that this issue does have opportunity to be addressed at various points already. So I'm okay with this, that view now, and I think that it doesn't negate the opportunity to bring those issues forward and have a great discussion. And so I, I'm in agreement with that now. Yeah.
Mayor Miller? Uh, thank you. I'm, I actually agree too about the single, or the single topic, however you want to encompass that. I think that's a good, good thing. I do, I am a little worried about just completely deleting frequency because I feel like sometimes if there's not something in here that encourages us to do something, then we just forget and we might not do it. So I guess my question would be, what if instead of saying council will hold a work session at least once a month, we said something like council may hold a work session? Because, or we could leave it as will as well and just if we don't have anything, we don't have anything. I just, you know, I, I worry about deleting it completely because I feel like then it gets a little, a little lost.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Maltin and then Mr. Walters.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with may. I also think if we are sort of defining subject matter that, that more than one committee is involved in, that we're just going to do it. And I feel like we have a commitment to it that we haven't had before. And this is a great way to move some of the ideas we've talked about earlier forward. And yes, that's it.
Mr. Walters?
I hear what Mr. Frantini is saying, but I would still delete frequency. I think may would serve then as a limitation, what if you wanted to hold more than one work session? I think if we find the work sessions valuable, we will start holding them, so long as there is a process for getting them on the agenda. And I think that's the, the most valuable thing. I, I continue to oppose limiting council such that you couldn't have a business meeting four times a month because, you know, we've, we've got a lot of actual work to do and things to approve. But I, I, I think the way we've constructed this with a, with a future description of the types of things that we're going to put into the work session format will help us to remember that and then once we start using it, we'll be fine.
Mayor Miller? I think you had some.
Thank you. Yeah, I was in, under, kind of trying to debate whether it was, I think once a month might be too frequent. Quarterly doesn't seem quite frequent enough. I'm inclined to get rid of the frequency, but I also would like to have this, the work session discussion at our retreat so that maybe we can generate a list of topics for, so staff knows and the rest of council knows, kind of, as, and I think it kind of comes up what our concerns are. But at, at the retreat in the spring, that's kind of our opportunity to identify and discuss as a group, kind of, what, what concerns are we having for the next 12, 18 months to two years? And so that we can kind of maybe put that on, on a rough calendar and, and staff then knows what to expect in the near future.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Frantini.
Um, so there is, that's a good idea also. That, oh, it talks about why, how items, items may be placed on work sessions agendas following the same procedures as regular council meetings, but I think I'm missing, if we delete the frequency part of it, which sounds like we're probably going to do, then how do we make a work session happen?
I think it would be the same process as, as any council agenda. I mean, we just have pre-existing agendas, but if, but if two council members say, hey, we want to have a work session next month and, you know, reach out to the mayor, follow the normal procedures, then that would get scheduled.
Would the mayor then be required to, like, now it's three, then he's required, he or she is required to add it to the agenda? Is it the same kind of thing with work sessions where if we have three council members requesting a work session, then the mayor is required to make time for that within? And does that need to be in here if we're deleting frequency?
Well, I think, I think that was the intention, is that if council wants to have a work session and some future evil mayor who is not in this room says no, then three council members could, could override that. Now, there's going to have to be some give and take because there will be business of the city that's going to have to get done. So ideally, the council and the mayor are communicating and everybody's working together and, you know, trying to accommodate those things. So I think, you know, there's, there's two ways to go setting out processes that you're trying to imagine how they'll hypothetically be used in the procedure, and that's to get really into the details and try to program out every, you know, eventuality that you can think of or to kind of leave things a little more vague. And, I mean, it's up to, up to council which direction you want to go. I think by saying that we follow the same processes for a regular agenda, you know, that, that seems to give a roadmap for how we would schedule them without a frequency, but.
I mean, worst case, the current procedures, I think, would allow three council members to say, I want to put a work session agenda, item, you know, 6B, I would like a work session on X.
Yeah.
And then we'd still have, you know, do our agenda. That's really all we're, council's kind of debating on removing that, but I don't think there's, I don't think there's desire for council to remove the business consent agenda just because there's a work session.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Yeah, I think we've, we've landed on it here. And I would also point out that retreats are not mentioned in here at all, but we still have them. Because we can, you know, we just all agree that we want to have a retreat and they're a special meeting, they fit, fit in here and.
We do have retreats in here.
Oh, I just searched for the word retreat.
It's on page nine, section 3.6. It says, "Council may meet in an informal conversation setting for a variety of purposes related to city business."
Okay, so in a hypothetical where we did not have section 3.6, we could still have a retreat, even absent the rule, because if, you know, we all agree or, you know, several of us do, then we can put it together and make it happen within the, within the rules. It still did not come up when I searched for it, so that's some other problem that I'm having.
So Mayor Miller, I know we have an executive session and I think this is going great, but we might be all getting a little bit punchy, so.
Yeah, all right.
I'm just wondering if other people feel the same.
I second.
A third.
All right, so we, we've stopped at, can we, that's seven, we're, we're in the middle of chapter seven though. What's, what's left in chapter seven here?
I think it's really that the only things left in chapter seven are 7.3, subpoint C, which is that council can request specific materials to be prepared by staff, and then D, which is that council may request staff to set up alternative seating arrangements.
So council wants to pick it up at chapter eight, a new chapter eight? Okay. All right. So, thank you, good, great discussion. Hopefully we, we captured that. And with that, speaking of scripts. So the council will now meet in an executive session to discuss potential litigation as allowed by RCW 423110. Council will be in executive session for approximately 20 minutes. We will come out of execution, executive session at 8:40. I think that's 15 minutes though. I think we can do it in 15, 8, 8:40. All right, so I'd like to call the regular meeting back to order. And their council has concluded its executive session. No action was taken. And I will, no further business before the council. I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Have a good night.